All right, well, it is 4:30. I will go ahead and call the meeting to order. And we are doing remote attendance pursuant to the state executive orders at 2020-07 and 2020-18, which can be found, the full text can be found in the agenda. And we will start with the consent agenda, which is an approval of the agenda and the approval of the November 18 minutes, oh, the November 19 minutes and January 11 minutes. So that's a lot of minutes. So do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the minutes from both January and November.
A second.
And the agenda.
There's actually three. There's two, there was two meetings in November, 18th and 19th, because 18th, there was a special meeting.
Yes, so there's November 18th, November 19th, and January 11th.
Correct.
I make a motion to approve all three of those.
Okay. Okay, and so then Michael seconded it, so we'll do Sophia.
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
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 All right, and Samantha, yes, and then we'll swear Kate in and she can start voting on things. So that motion passes. We will now move on to the swearing of Wrigley. Welcome, and Sophia will take it over from here.
Welcome Kathleen, Kate. I was saying Kathleen because we're doing the official swearing in. We would like to swear you in as a trustee to the Board of Decatur Public Library, and we are both in the state of Illinois. Are you in the state of Illinois presently?
Yes, I am presently in the state of Illinois.
I am presently in the state of Illinois. I would like you to raise your hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Decatur Public Library Trustee according to the best of my abilities.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Decatur Public Library Trustee according to the best of my ability.
Welcome, and I think you're supposed to sign it and show us the signature.
So now I'm signing the Board Member Oath of Office form. Okay. And then you can see my signature right there.
Excellent, thank you.
And then I'll send it to you after this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, we are super excited. Now we have another, another person, so it's been so long. So we have eight now, so. And all right, so we will move on to the next agenda item, which is, were there any public comments, Rick?
None.
Any written communications from the public?
None.
We'll move on to City Librarians Report, Rick.
Well, a strange couple of months, as everybody knows. We closed, I haven't seen you guys since November. We closed on November 23rd. We were closed the entire month of December, but we did have computer access by appointment. I gotta let somebody else in the room. Let's report myself. Let's look through all the minutes here. My goodness. So we did have computer, computer appointments, and we did, you know, quite a few. We had 390 public sessions, and I'm sure Robert talked more about this, but we, we, we did curbside throughout the month of December, and we did over 1,000 transactions, which is pretty incredible. I've reported to you guys the, the numbers for the entire year. Some of those may change just a little bit when I give you my annual report next month, but if you look at our numbers, again, if, if I told you at the beginning of the year that we would have a pandemic, be closed for approximately half the year, and our, our change in circulation for the year would only be 35%, and if you throw in electronic content use, the overall collection use decline is only 30%, I think you'd be pretty happy with that. So that's my, that's my takeaway from this, is that, you know, staff has done a great job of responding to this. You know, I tell you, I talked to a lot of other directors in the state, and we haven't had half of the issues that, that other libraries have had. It should be, this should be, we don't talk enough about this. One person so far has become COVID positive, you know, and she did not contract at here at work. You know, so nobody, nobody has got, we have followed the rules extremely well, and nobody has gotten sick. And I, you know, I talked to other libraries of this size, and that hasn't been the case. So I'm really, really proud of that. We've done some, some really interesting thing the last couple of months, and I'm not going to step on the Division Head reports because I know there's some things that they want to talk to you about, but I'm happy to talk about anything that you guys want to take a closer look at.
I mean, that's just great. I mean, it sounds like people are using it, and when I was there yesterday, it sounded like people were happy we were open again, and.
Yeah, we had, Monday we had 500 through the door, which is a pretty good day. I mean, pandemic-wise, it's a pretty good day. I mean, our, our average pre-pandemic was 700, 800. But, and we had close to 300 yesterday, and let me, I want to show you, share my screen because I've talked to you about this technology before, so I want to kind of let you take a look at, at what, what it looks like. Here is our, this, I have to refresh, it's not real time, I have to refresh it, but this is what we had for today so far, right up to the moment, 253 people through the door, and this tells you how many are in the building right now. So we can take, we could take a look, and we can track this. If it gets up to 75, Robert and Matt and I get an alert so that we can go, you know, start keeping track at the door, and we would have to turn somebody away. So that's really cool, and the biggest number I've seen here is 44. Now, it's not like I'm sitting here watching it all day, but that's, you know, that was, I think, between one and two on Tuesday.
So, you know, that was, one of the questions I wanted to ask you was just, because we reopened, or you did reopen, you know, just kind of what, what volume was, kind of what was, but, but it sounds just from your comments that the patrons coming in, very welcomed, that the library is back open?
Absolutely. Yep. Yeah, it was, I mean, yeah, people are, it's, it's the, the one public body that people have an actual emotional attachment to, you know, you don't see this at the water department, I don't think, but.
I doubt it.
But, you know, people are really, really happy, you know, so, you know, 500 people through the door on day one, that's, that's pretty good in the middle of a pandemic, and, but it never got crowded. You know, it was, it was fairly steady, and we never had a lot of people in here at a time because we're, because, you know, we don't have seating, and we don't have programs, so.
Just out of curiosity as well, the software that you brought to, showed us, you've had that for a while?
I just got the, the capacity software right after we closed. That was an added module, which I showed you, and it cost $150 a year.
Wow, wow. That's, that's interesting stuff.
Yep, and it, it does it by, it's not, it's not the, the laser that you break when you walk through, it actually is a, is a, it counts the, the actual heads. So if you're standing there walking back and forth, you don't get counted a bunch of times.
All right, any other questions for Rick? Okay, and we will move on to the Division Head Reports. So Robert, you want to start us off?
Eric, Eric. Hello. Yeah, Rick, he actually talked a lot about what was going on this, in the circulation department, as far as the numbers are concerned. You know, first of all, I think one of the things that stands out for me for last year was how the management team came together. I talked to Rick about this earlier, and I just, you know, we were just sort of set in the middle of a crisis, and, you know, just a lot of kudos to the guys who managed the crisis and, on the departmental levels. You know, we, all of a sudden, we were implementing quarantine protocols, or adapting services and staffing, creating remote work, and trying to, you know, work ways to make that, those areas accountable. And then we had the IT that had to adapt and just basically upgrade the devices to accommodate, you know, those people working remote. So I think we had everyone really able to do work at home. So, you know, I know this is not really departmental, but I thought it was just really very, you know, worth mentioning that the management group on this level, seeing it from day to day, was very impressive. I'm really proud to be working with the management staff. I, I think everyone just really worked together really well. As far as the numbers, we did see, of course, a decrease, but we still had, 2019, we had about 7,000 people in the building, excuse me, checking out materials. Out of all of the 287,000 items that were checked out, about 7,000 of those people accounted for them, close to 8,000. But last year, of course, it dropped, and we had about 160, look, it looks like now, items that were checked it out, and the people that account for those was about 4,000, close to 5,000 people that can account for those items that were checked out. So we have people that are, you know, as Rick said, they're really emotional and passionate about our library, and we still have a lot of people coming in the building and, you know, wanting to check out materials. And I call the big four, the big four number, the four groups that usually get the most attention. Of course, number one is the juvenile books, the children's books. They check out more children's books from year to year than anything. The next one is the general collection. Those books are checked out for the most part next, and then next is DVDs. And last but not least, on the number four is large print. Our seniors check out, well, not just the seniors, those are like large print, I like large print, but, and some might say, well, you're a senior, but anyway, moving on, yeah, large print materials, we check out a lot of large print materials. And generally, the people who come in the building, and we have a lot of people just wanting to come in and, and sort of browse the large print whenever it's possible. So I think, you know, as far as the library's circulation, you know, one thing we've noticed, we keep about 10,000 items, you know, as we, as an average, are checked out throughout the year, you know, even when we were down, it went down, of course, a little bit, but, you know, still, we see that number. There's still a lot of items checked out on a month-to-month basis. And of course, the circulation staff, over the year, we lost two of our clerks, they retired, but we have at least one person that's already moved into a clerk position, and we did not, we backfilled the one, but we won't be backfilling for the understanding the other person who looks to go for the next position that's going to be open. So that's pretty much it for the circulation department. And admin, of course, you know, we've been sort of helping along with the help of the city for HR services, and also with the payroll and the invoicing and things like that. So, so far, so good.
Awesome. Any questions for Robert? All right, and is Becky here? Is Becky going to present, or? Nope.
No, Becky's, Becky's at home for a while, and she's actually working from home, but I told her, she's home for family reasons. I told her to focus on that, and Carol's not going to be here today.
Okay, that's fine. All right, Alyssa, that leaves you, and Matt?
All right, so kind of along with what Robert was saying, kind of want to give kudos to all staff for being prepared. The first time we reopened to the public last summer, we hadn't been in the building. And so when we came back into the building, we still had displays that had been up since the winter. We were still displaying snowbooks and the winter reading program, and we had a lot of work to do to turn that around for patrons. But this time around, we'd been working in the building all along, and when we knew that it was about time to open up again, everybody jumped into action, and we were able to get displays up and ready to go, and with the pages help, get books out on the floor too. So when patrons came in the building on Tuesday, we were ready to go. It had been obvious that we'd been working all along during this closure, and I appreciate the fact that we were able to do that. So something unusual for the month of January, my staff actually sent in six requests to the Friends of the Library. That's unusual. So Alex sent in three, Katie sent in one, Tabitha sent in her first one, and Susan sent in one. But I want to highlight our two brand-new programs we've never done before, but we're very excited about. First, Katie is working with Casey, our young adult librarian, and they're going to create something you would call subscriptions. Right now, we're calling them tentatively book boxes, but the idea is that a young adult is going to request a book to be hand-chosen, handpicked for them based upon a survey that they're going to fill out. So we are taking all of the young adults who were in our summer reading program and our winter reading program, and we're going to focus on them in an email blast and say, hey, you want us to pick out something special for you? Tell us what you like, and we'll give you something special. But it's going to be like a gift, because we're going to package it special, brand it special. They're going to get some, as they put it, chachkies, so like back-to-school, you know, book, pencils, erasers, Post-it notes, some things branded with the library logo, and they'll sign up. And with the Friends' help, we're going to start with, I believe, 30 of them. And as they sign up, hopefully, we'll have too many people signed up, and we'll have to ask for more money. That's, that's the hope. I know I like subscriptions. It's always fun to get something in the mail and open it up and be surprised by what somebody, somebody picked out for you. And the other one, Tabitha, she's been with us for, I want to say, nearly two years now. She's full-time as of last summer, and she has not attempted a program yet. In fact, I, nothing against her, I just didn't think that was something she wanted to do, but we just had to find the right thing. And she and Alex both saw something called a spice club, and Tabitha has been wanting to do a cookbook club for a while, apparently. Now, a spice club, what the library does is we give them a kit that includes the spice of the month, so like turmeric, along with three recipes, and the people who want to participate, they come, pick those up, take those home, try them out, and then they meet via Zoom, and maybe someday, together on site, to discuss what they liked about the spice and what they didn't like, recipes that they enjoyed, ones they didn't, or anything new they've discovered. So it's kind of a really exciting January, considering we don't have real programming, we've got a lot of things in store, and it makes us very excited moving forward.
Sounds fun.
So, thank you.
Actually, that, that, that one sounds very interesting.
Greg's gonna, he's gonna be your first one, sign up.
Too late, Anne Brunson already. She wants in, but anything that involves food, pick me.
It's a good thing, yes.
All right, any questions for Alyssa? All right, Matt, you were up.
Thank you.
Hello. Big news is, I've got a, I finally created a virtual private network that will allow our staff to connect securely from home to their desktops. Chris and I have been testing it for about two weeks, and it seems to be up and running. I believe Alyssa is going to try tomorrow to see if the instructions we wrote make sense. Other than that, I mean, Chris and I just keep updating Windows computers. There's a lot of updates coming out recently, and they just take time. We're going after those as fast as we can. And that's pretty much it.
VPN is kind of a big deal for us. I mean, to be able to access your own desktop, when you're working from home, makes a huge difference.
Yep, I'm home right now.
Hey, I have a question. You know, you know, just with what Matt had, had reported, as we've all heard with the pandemic, you know, it's, it's, you know, the expectation is there'll be a lot of business, office, approach, operational changes, you know, just the whole work-from-home occurrence that, that, that was required during, during the pandemic, and still, still is, is occurring. I, I guess, you know, Matt, Rick, and others, how does, how do, how do you see that affecting the library? I mean, I mean, now you have the ability to work from home, but with patrons still coming in, I mean, what, what do you see going forward will happen?
Well, we've talked about that, and, you know, we've talked about some changes that won't go away. Curbside service, we don't, we don't see that going away. Some form of virtual programming, we don't see that going away. You know, making a practice of when, when the presenter is okay with it, recording programs, making them available online, so you could, can't make it at the time, you can watch later, that's not going to go away. And we, and we're talking about the option of, of work from home. So what, what we haven't defined yet is what are the parameters where that's going to be okay? Honestly, it may be, you know, an issue with, one of the ways it may help us with some staff, depending on the level you're working at. I mean, again, if your, if your job is to put books on the shelf.
You got to be there.
We need you in, we need you in the building, but, but with some jobs, you know, you know, we've all had those days where you're, hey, you're kind of sick, but you're not that, you know, you don't know what, come in, come in, and you power through it. And we're not so crazy about people doing that anymore, you know? And, and it may be that, that, you know, when you're on the, on the fence, it might be that it's a good day to stay home and, and work from home. So we just have to define what, and make it clear to everybody what those parameters are going to be. But I think it's a, it's, it's a, a tool to, to keep in our toolbox, and we might be able to make good use of it.
Thank you.
All right, anything else? All right, well, we will now move on to the personal, like the PPPR committee, mouthful. So Michael, and Rick, yeah, Alyssa, you guys?
I, I have to say that Anne Brunson, I knew Anne Brunson because she was a skate guard at Great Skate South, I think. Back 100 years ago, we all roller skated. Rick, Robert spoke a little bit to some of the personnel update, but do you want to update us on that?
Yeah, and I think he covered most of it. I'll talk about two, two things that he didn't. We, we reopened the secretary position. We, we interviewed a number of candidates in just, in November and December, all of whom had good qualities, one of whom we thought was right for the job, but we were unable to come to terms with, and she did not accept the job. Okay. So we reopened it, and I have about six or seven applicants right now. That job closes tomorrow, and we will, we will begin interviewing hopefully next week. And the other one is, is the, the social worker. So I, I think I've told you guys, we did, we do have, we do have the funding from an outside source, the Mid County Millhouse, Millhouse Board to have a part-time social worker in here. We have named a candidate, she's ready to go, the contracts are finally all good, and now she's waiting for her, she's going to get an LLC designation. She's been advised to do that, so until that paperwork comes through, we're, we're kind of in limbo again. But those are the, the, my addendums to what Robert said.
Okay. On the adult computer use and internet access policy, we're, we're voting on that. I, in my infinite wisdom, I threw away my notes.
Yeah, so the.
But.
It's the second paragraph that, that has changed. So in the, in the current version we're working under, it says, and let me pull that up on the screen. So in our current version, which I don't have here, but basically it says, who are a Decatur resident, you have to have a library card. But if you're from out of town, just show us an ID, and you can get on a, get on a computer. It's kind, it was kind of our way of getting people to, to get library cards. But, you know, if you just want to come in, check your email or something like, it, you know, it takes, takes a while to get that library card. We'd love you to get a library card, but I took that out of, we took that out of there, but there's still an incentive to get a library card, because if you have it, you can log without assistance from staff. You can just go sit down and log in. We also removed, and this is just, again, it's an access issue, we removed the financial threshold. So we, we have been saying, if you owe us over $25, you can't get on the computer. And our recommendation is to eliminate that. For one thing, you know, a computer is how people sometimes are, are searching for a job. And we just want to, we want to give, we want to give access. If you, if you came from out of town, we'd give you access. We just want to make it easier for Decatur residents also. All the rest of it is unchanged.
So do we need to have a motion for this?
You can make the motion for the, for our committee.
Okay, well, I'm going to go ahead and make the motion to Rick's changes.
All right, I need a second.
A second.
All right, Susan, all right. So we will do, we have to do roll call, just so you know, Kate, like every, every vote, even leaving, we have to vote to leave. So, so we'll start with Sophia.
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Kate? Are you, I didn't hear you, sorry.
Yes.
Oh, sorry. And Carl? All right, and Samantha, yes. All right, that one, that policy passes.
Okay, on the Arts and Artifacts Display Policy, we passed that. We didn't change it last time.
Yeah, well, remember from the committee meeting, I explained that in front of you guys in, in November was actually an earlier iteration. I didn't put the most up-to-date version in front of you, which is, among other things, the fact that we don't use that, this policy doesn't come up very often. What this, this is the, this is really the most recent one, and the committee recommended no changes to it. So it is a, it's a correction of my mistake from November. This, it simply tells more about what the criteria are, except one, except the work of art. It still goes to you guys.
Okay, so do we need to make a motion on the?
Yep.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion that we accept the Arts and Artifacts Display Policy as presented. I need a second.
A second.
All right, then we'll do roll call. Sophia?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Carl?
Yes.
Samantha, yes. All right, that policy passes.
Okay, I'm going to let Susan talk to this, but you all should have received your evaluation form, have it turned in.
Right. I don't think we need to, at this point, ask Rick to leave, but I just want to remind everyone to please look at it and fill it out. I realize that there are some questions on there that we may not know really, or have firsthand knowledge of. Just do the best you can or skip it. I think it's a good basis and groundwork for going forward. I would, I have gotten a couple back. I would like for the more senior board members to please fill it out, because you are more familiar than some of us who just got on the board. So, you know, I, I've only received a couple, and they are from fairly new board members. So if I could have those by early next week, then I can look at them, and then I will get with Samantha, and then she will make. And then she will, um, make an appointment with Rick to, to do his evaluation. So, um, like to get this going, cause we'd like to, you know, give him his evaluation, it's, uh, almost a month overdue now, so.
Yeah, Amy?
Um, Susan, did you get mine last night? I sent it.
I did not, maybe it went to my spam.
Well, or maybe I.
It did go to my spam.
Okay, good. Thank you.
It went to Rick.
I'll send.
Yeah.
Michael, don't tell me you did.
Mine's there, you just can't see it.
I sent mine in last night, I don't know if you've received that one.
I, I did receive yours, Carl, yes.
You know, you're Susan, this is Greg Zentara. Uh, I apologize, I know that I've received it, I've not responded to you. Like all of you, I've been very busy, um, work-related things, um, but, uh, you'll have it, uh, before the end of, for me.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Sorry, I received it and I half filled it out and I will finish it tomorrow and send it back to you tomorrow.
I know that some of the questions.
Me meeting or anything.
No, I'm glad, I saw it on my computer tonight and I was like.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know that some of the questions are difficult to answer and just skip those, but I, uh, again, and, and especially when it is in terms of goals, because really Rick did not, was not able to set goals last year, so.
I mean, we, we've had a couple of really tough years, Rick.
Yeah.
So, you know.
As I told, told staff recently, I can say it about twenty nineteen, I, I said it about twenty nine, uh, twenty twenty, I, nothing about it I really wanna repeat, but I, boy, I'm glad I did it with you guys.
Okay.
We've, we've got kind of a, yeah. Okay. You guys get your stuff.
On diversity, equity, inclusion, Robert?
Yes, we received, uh, I think I updated, uh, the board last time on, about the, um,
bar.
proposal that we received, and I, I wasn't for sure if there were others who wanted a copy of the proposal. I can send it out to you, I know, I think, uh, Samantha and Carl have a copy of the proposal that was sent out. Uh, and this is from our, um, from, uh, Christina Fuller. And she's, she was the consultant with the, uh, she's affiliated with, uh, ALA, she's, uh, she's got great credentials. They're listed in the proposal and she sort of lays out a step plan, which she did in our meeting, about how she will attack our diversity issues and, I work with the staff. And there is, uh, at least, I think, three tiers that she proposes, where she works with us for a few months and maybe for six months. Uh, and then possibly for the whole year, so there are different steps, uh, for the, the pricing. Now, um, the other thing to do, our due diligence, um, I also suggested that, you know, and I think, um, actually Samantha had asked me about it. And so I contacted Karen Lyons, who is the executive director for the Evingston Public Library. And they did a really great job with their diversity, um, statement and actually it was award-winning. Um, they have a great, um, statement on their, on their website and, um, the Rails Consortium that's, uh, reaching across, um, libraries in Illinois, um, they actually, they, they gave them, I think, a grant, um, because of their engagement with the community. So Karen was, um, really willing to just, you know, kind of help us to get started and walk, you know, kind of walk us through their process. So she's, she's given us like two or three interviews, um, and she just recently, I think I only forwarded the, her recent email when she came back from vacation, cause she's been on vacation, uh, to Samantha and Rick. Or she said she'd be glad to get with me and kind of go over the, um, our proposal. So we can look at our pricing and they can maybe, you know, um, she can, you know, sort of say what their pricing maybe was. And that's something that, you know, we can't really do on, over email, probably shouldn't. So, um, that's the next step, uh, and those of you guys who got the emails, you know, she said, you know, she's ready to talk with me as soon as we can just sort of get a time. So I sent her an email back and said, anytime this week is fine. So as soon as Karen gets with me, I'll share those details with you guys. And then the next step I think will be is, if, you know, we're gonna, you know, put it to the board or, or, um, if this is who we wanna go with.
But just, I'm sorry to interrupt, Robert.
No, go ahead.
Honestly, I think it's.
That was more of a question, actually, that's.
Yeah, I think it's a, I think it's an administrative decision, you know, when, so if the, if the, if the uh, I would recommend you reconvene the committee, uh, and just to, to give background to people. Now, one of the things we decided about the, the, this committee was that I would not serve on it, I would not direct it, I would listen to it. So, uh, if Robert can, if you can reconvene the committee, come up with some recommendations and then we can sit down and, and make our decision based on, you know, our needs and our budget.
Excellent.
Does anybody want the, um, proposal that Robert was talking about?
I'll take, I'll take a copy.
I would take one too. If you don't mind.
I as well. Okay, it's not a problem. Okay, sure, I can, what if I just send it out to the board?
That'd be good.
Yeah, just send it out to the board and, uh, you guys can all look at it. And, um, I'm not sure, you know, I don't think I have anything that you can compare it to, but you can at least see what her, um, check out her credentials and see what she, and she's out there on ALA if you wanna do some searching. Uh, and I could actually send you some of the other emails that, um, were sent to me to, uh, give, for her reference, so, uh, I'll make sure I get those out to you guys.
Yeah.
I trust you, I just, I'd just like to see the proposal.
Sure.
Just don't respond to all, guys. Just remember.
And, uh, hey, yeah, Kat, Katie, that's one, don't respond to everybody, cause we get in trouble for that.
She's a lawyer, so it's fine.
There's no other, other, other than, Rick has given Samantha and I a list of other policies that we're gonna probably be, uh, going over. So those will be to come.
Yeah, the list is, seems like it's less than last year.
Yeah, it's more manageable for sure. Samantha, it's Greg, I, I do have a, kind of a question to ask, um, related to, I think it falls under Personnel Policy Public Relations Committee. Uh, you know, it, it has to do with the board.
Hmm.
Um, today we, today we installed the eighth member.
Hmm.
Um, any update on the ninth member?
We do not, that's actually an old business, but.
Oh, is that an old business?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, then I'll defer till then.
I mean, we keep, I mean, there's no update. As far as I know. Yeah.
I'll defer till then.
Okay, that's all for PPPR.
All right, we'll move on to Amy.
Uh, the finance committee met last week, we reviewed two months full of, of, um, check, the check register from, um, the staff. Everything was routine, uh, they were able to answer all of our questions, the committee recommends that the board accept the two months, um, the November and December check register.
All right, can I have a second?
I second.
I second.
So, we will go down the list, Sophia?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Amy? Yes.
Carl?
Yes.
Samantha, yes. All right, the check register passes?
Yes, thank you very much. Um, then the other thing we discussed was the report that Rick prepared and that is in your packet, which is the full year report for, um, the calendar year that just ended. Uh, Greg provided us with the additional information that even though property taxes look like, uh, they're slightly less than we expected, that there is an additional distribution, which I believe is in hand in January, but because we're on a cash counting system, uh, it will fall into this year, but just so you know. So, in terms of, um, particularly in terms of expenses, Rick and the staff were able to stay within budget and come in a little better than budget. So with all that, um, we recorded revenue minus expense of a hundred and seven thousand dollars. We were planning on basically breaking even, so that's good. That money stays, uh, we don't have to do anything. That money essentially is in our, uh, savings account and rolls over into cash flow for the coming year. We may at some point in the future decide that we wanna move it to the capital account, but given the number of things that remain uncertain because of the pandemic, uh, the finance committee felt that we should just leave it where it is for the moment, and obviously we'll take some directions and grade on that, but our rec- current recommendation is that we not do anything. So are there any questions on the, uh, financials for last year?
If I could make a, just a brief comment, Amy, I, uh, that, uh, that, the, the monies that you talked about that came in January that Greg let us know about last week, it may, if, if every, if all of our comes on time in twenty twenty-one, it may look like that balanced our budget, but it's smoke and mirrors, you know, it's not, this is, this is not a long-term solution to our issues.
Right.
You know, I just, I emphasize that could, everything could look much better than it actually is, uh, because of that.
You know, you know, just, just some, some commentary for me on this, you know, as we talked to the finance committee at different times, but, you know, generally for the, for the board, you know, I mean, we have, we as a board have a somewhat systemic dilemma that we have to deal with going forward, you know, Rick as well. And that is, you know, the, 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 the primary revenue driver, funding the library, is the property tax levy.
Right.
That's pushing, I don't know, what, you know, two-point-nine million of the, you know, three-point-two, three-point-three million dollars of revenue that Rick needs to run the library, um, as it's being run today. Um, but, but as you all know, as I know, property taxes are too high in Illinois, they're too high in Decatur. And the city council has demonstrated little if any appetite to increase property taxes. So, so on one hand, we have to recognize that the primary source of our revenue is being capped in some fashion. You know, not, not, not by any law or anything, just because there's no appetite to increase property taxes. So, so what does that tell us? I mean, how do we, as a board, how do we behave or what do we do? Um, and I, I have no answer to that, but it's just something that we all need to think about. And, and probably the sooner we do and the sooner we come up with a plan for what to do and what to, how to, how to do, how to lobby, uh, with council, whatever that case is, I think is, is something that we as a board should think about and talk about and decide what to do.
And I, I really appreciate those comments and I certainly agree with all of them. I, I'm pretty sure that part of the answer is some of the steps that Rick's already taken to make staffing more flexible and to build in, um, you know, just a, a, a more resilient staff. And, you know, a continued awareness, we're gonna have to continue to do more with less. So, we'll presumably start discussing those, um,
And some.
then in the spring and, and, uh, anybody who wants to join on the finance discussions, that'd be great.
Yeah, I mean, it's gonna be, it's gonna come down to advocacy at a certain point, you know? All of us, as, that's part of our job as trustees, is advocacy. So at the, the local, the state, the federal, so, you know, signing those, those emails that you get from the ALA, I don't know if you get them, but I get them, um, to send to your congresspeople or, and the, those things actually, you know, they help in some small way. So, um, whatever we can do, even proactively to help, um, and even just advocating throughout our, the community with our peers and our, our coworkers and things like that. So, like, we are important, our library is important to our community, um, and improving it, so we just have to show it. So, and why we deserve the money, you know, why we deserve the extra, the, you know, the, the extra funds to do the things that we need to do in the community. So.
Since you guys, an article, I sent it a few, few years ago, uh, but, uh, board changes, written in, uh, in twenty sixteen in, uh, in The Atlantic. Uh, and it's talking about, uh, it talks about, there's, there's one thing that you can look at to see, uh, to predict whether library use is up or down, and it's funding. It's not the other way around, you know, since it doesn't drive the funding, it's vice versa. Uh, so, uh, I'll, I'll send that off to you and you can read it at your leisure and make of it what you will.
Okay.
I think if true, it's extremely important to know.
Yeah, absolutely. All right, we didn't have any other, right?
No, that was all I had.
Okay. So, um, foundation, Rick, foundation update?
Uh, the, uh, the, uh, annual appeal is now up to twelve thousand and seventy dollars. Uh, they will meet again, uh, I'm hoping within the next couple of weeks, um, I, I will have a proposal for an LED, for LED signage, uh, outdoor signage, message board type stuff, and, uh, I will put that in front of them.
Okay. Um, friends of the library?
Uh, Alyssa talked about it a little bit, I, we took six, uh, six requests to them, all of which they funded. Um, they just hired a new treasurer.
Okay, Amy, no, no book sale news?
Well, they're still not gonna have the book sales.
Yeah.
You know, and they're building up stock, still. So, you know, they have done some work with, uh, um, uh, I'm sorry, what's the name of the company, uh, Thrift Books? So Thrift Books is out of Chicago and an online bookseller, used bookseller. They will come and pick up, take their books away for free and sell them and give them half of the profit. Not half of the, of the, the gross, but half the profit.
Sure.
So, um, and they've taken advantage of that, they may need to do so a little bit more.
If I could just, not so much about exactly that thing, but just to build on something you were talking about before. Uh, I think if you, we wanna do, um, advocacy in the community, we need more, more, um, cheerleaders and programs is one of the ways to get more cheerleaders. And so I really applaud what Alyssa and the staff are doing to, to do new and creative ways of reaching out to people, because if we're gonna ask for more money, we have to do that kind of stuff and be aggressive about it.
Yeah. All right, are you jealous, chair? Executive.
I, yeah, no, no report, uh, at this time.
Okay.
A question, question, question. Um, um, my recollection is John Phillips, when he was a board member, was, was on the Illinois Heartland Library System Board? Is it, is John still on that?
He is not.
No, okay, okay.
All right, so we'll move on to old business, um, Greg already brought it up, but there's no update on the board opening, so I will follow up with the mayor and see, and, and Rick, you can also reach out, maybe we can tack her from both sides.
But Samantha, further to, to what I was gonna ask about that.
Yeah.
Is, uh, um, I know my board seat, my two, three-year terms expires June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. Uh, that means there, as at least, I think Michael's seat expires at the same date, okay? Um, and there may be somebody who replaced Aaron Largent, I'm not sure who that is, whose seat might, might be expiring the same date. Might be Amy? I'm not sure.
I don't remember.
But my question is.
Second, I'll hold up.
You know, we've got, we've got, you know, we've got eight members now, we're, we're trying to get a ninth. But in less than six months' time, we're gonna have another three seats that'll be vacated.
Yeah.
And for me and for Michael, you know, it's the end of our two-year terms, or two, three-year terms, which, as I understand, doesn't, you know, protocol has been that you serve two, three-year terms and you vacate.
Hmm.
Um, and I'm just expressing that, um, I mean, the, the library board's too important. And if we have issue getting board members, I mean, I would have no, I would, I would volunteer to continue to serve. Okay, and I, you know.
And the, the bylaws allow for that, I believe. Uh, and, and, yeah, it is you and, you and Michael are, are, your terms are finished and, uh, Amy's first term is finished.
Okay, so Amy.
She will have another.
She will have another term.
Okay, so there's two seats we're going to lose unless we do something. And I just wanted to bring it up that, you know, it's the board's choice what to do.
I don't, I think that, I think, I'll, I'll have to look in the bylaws, Greg, but I think it says that it, it doesn't, it doesn't okay a third term, but it does say that you can remain in your seat until such time as
Okay.
it's filled.
Okay.
I think we tried to get others to stay and like last year, I think we tried to get a couple others to stay and they.
Correct, that's right. And, and you know, and, and Mark would have, but he actually had a replacement and the replacement just was never seated.
Yeah.
Right.
I guess for, for Michael and I, I mean, if, if we are going to vacate on June 30th, 2021, I mean, it seems to me we, we seem to have challenging times to get people to, or get, get it through the mayor to, you know, be appointed to the board. You know, we need to start now to fill Michael's seat and my seat if those seats need to be refilled.
Yeah, and I know they just came, like they're doing a new board training, like Bruce Nims is training. So like, I think it's finished in February, so maybe we could get a new list or maybe.
So, yeah, they will send, they will send me a copy of their graduates and list their, you know, who, who went through that, that board training program and, you know, what their interests are. So I can bring that to you guys and, and, you know, you can see if that's a good, you know, potential recruiting tool.
Amy?
Well, and that's all great, but I think that given the relationship between the city and the library and the rough waters we're heading into and Greg's contributions to this board, you know, I, I mean, that because of his, his role, I don't think, I certainly would not be in favor of losing Greg and.
There you go, Michael. How do you feel about that?
Michael is important too, but.
Thanks, Amy. Thanks, Amy.
I'd like you to leave.
I'll be willing to stay if you need it. I don't have any problem with that, but I understand what you're saying, Amy.
That, that because of Greg's other hat, that that's just a crucial relationship we're writing down.
Well, that may be, that may be another, I mean, that may be another consideration if Greg does, I mean, if he does step away, is there somebody else at the city that would be willing to step onto the board?
But, but let me, let me just respond to that in a way that.
I see you, Carl.
You know, I mean, I've had discussion with people within the city of, kind of about this. And it, it, you know, is although state law, state statute allows city employees and council members to be appointed to boards, the practice in Decatur has not been to do that. Okay. I was appointed to the board by Mayor McElroy because there was a reason to do it six years ago. There was some financial situations going on that, that, that required certain things. Michael, you were appointed to the board by McElroy as well. Okay, so it's Aaron at the time. But there were things going on at that time. And, 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 and I'm led to believe that it is, it is not the normal protocol of, of the council to have city staff members sitting on boards such as the library. So, you know, my expectation is, and I've had this discussion with the city manager, not that it means anything, but, but but kind of the, at least as I understand, the expectation is when Greg vacates the board, you know, another city employee would not be appointed to the board.
Oh.
Because that's not the normal protocol that the city council has followed. Okay? But, you know, that's, you know, that doesn't, it doesn't mean anything. It's just, it's, I guess it's up for the board to decide what the board wants to do and, you know, to discuss with the mayor, discuss with whomever as to how they approach things.
Carl? Sorry.
Carl?
I believe we've had, maybe had this conversation briefly beforehand, but I mean, do we as a board put forth nominations of whom we, we think would be suitable candidates for such?
We can recommend them to the mayor and she decides.
So. Because I mean, I know a young African-American woman who is a strong financial background, has expressed interest in public service as well. I mean, I could ask her if it's something she'd be interested in. And I, I admit she's.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, ask her, ask her. And then if you give her, like, you can either give her Rick's or my information and we can get it over to the mayor and at least, because I mean, I don't, I don't know that it's like, you know, always on her radar. We still.
Got a lot of other things to worry about.
Yeah, there's a lot going on. So. And so, yeah, if you get us her name, you can give her our information. And we can talk to her about the commitment because it is a fair commitment. So not a lot of people want to take that, that time. But I, yeah, we absolutely are looking for.
Yeah, that's why I said she's expressed an interest in public service before and so I, that's why I brought it up.
She sounds great to me. Public service and finance.
Yeah. Susan?
Anything in the bylaws about the terms, by the way, I'm sorry.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I think that, you know, that's a great idea. The more we can get, especially the more financial people we can get is great. Going back to Greg's position on the board. You know, that, that may not be what's been protocol or whatever in the past. I do think that we can make a case to the mayor that it has been a very productive thing to have Greg on the board.
Yeah.
And so, you know, I, I think there, there might be some, some leeway there. It, you know, if Greg is interested in, in staying on for a little while. Or someone, we could make a case that it, it's not a bad idea to have someone from the city on the board. I, I just think we could make a case for that is all I'm saying.
Yep.
I agree.
Okay. All right, anything else? Anybody else? All right, we will move on. I don't think there's any other old business, new business. And I know Amy has to leave here shortly. So I don't know if you want to stick around. That's the FMLA Leave Expansion and Emergency Paid Sick Leave Policy due to COVID-19. Okay, there's two policies in that, in that title.
I am so sorry to run. I have to run. I trust you. Thank you.
Bye, Amy.
Bye, Amy.
You guys approved this policy back in June. It sunset on December 31. The, there was subsequent legislation from Washington that relief that did not include this. However, the legislation specifically said that employers could extend this if they wished. My recommendation is to extend through June 30th.
All right, I will take a motion to extend it through June 30.
I'll make a motion to. A second.
Okay. We'll say Greg and then Sophia. All right, so we'll do roll call. Sophie, or I'm sorry, is there any discussion on this? Should have said that. All right, Sophia?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Carl?
Yes.
Yes, and Samantha, yes. All right, that one is now moved to June 30. Do we need to, so we're talking about the 2021 meeting schedule. Do we need to vote on this or just discuss it and approve it?
You can vote on it.
Okay. So does anybody have any issues with it remaining the, the third Thursday of every month unless it's a legal holiday? Any issues with the, the dates or anything?
Schedule is, this is just, I don't have it in front of me, just is just the board meetings.
Yes.
Not the committee meetings, just the board meetings.
Yeah, we already, we voted on the committee meetings in those.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, so I will take a motion for, to have them, them committee meetings. Who is that? All right, Sophia?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Kate? Carl?
Yes.
And Samantha, yes. All right, is there any other new, well, I have a, I have a quick new business, but we'll talk about it more in February. Just consider, I will need a Friends of the Library trustee, like someone to go to the Friends of the Library meetings. They are on the second Thursday of every month. And they are having Zoom meetings, but I'm not going to assign anybody until we discuss the bylaws because I was considering having, and you guys can just think about it and we can talk about it later. Where we have a different representative each month, but in the bylaws, I believe it says it has to be, it's just one person. Because it is a commitment. The meetings are about an hour. I, I was a trustee at a certain point, but I was also a Friends member or a Friends board member as well. So I was already on the board, so I might as well. So you just, it would lessen the burden on the person that has, that attends the meetings. And you would also get to know the Friends of the Library at that board as well. So just consider. All right, so that is my, and then Rick approached to review the standards.
Yeah, I just wondered how you guys wanted to go about that. So we reviewed the whole book in a special meeting, whenever that was, January, November, it was the November 18 special meeting. Typically what we do is we do a chapter a month. And it'd been talked about in the past, but I don't know how you guys want to do that. Do you want to continue doing it the same way? Do you want to, you know, have it sometimes, you know, individual board, like on the IHLS board, individual board members, you know, one month it might be Sophia does chapter two and then Kate does chapter three the next month, et cetera. So I just thought I'd throw it out there, but I didn't want to review another chapter since we just reviewed the whole book.
I know, we just reviewed the whole thing.
Please.
I kind of liked it, like in one meeting, like just so we, I mean.
And, and we could do that. I mean, we could certainly do that, a special meeting once a year.
I liked the one meeting personally as well. I thought it was just easier and I thought it also was more cohesive to just review it in one meeting as opposed to here and there throwing it in. Well, I, I, it made me think about it more.
And it was more strategic too. So like, you're kind of like, it's because a lot of the stuff is, you know, reviewing like what we do and what we could do better. I, I thought it was kind of something that kind of makes you think about how we, and it's not so piecemeal, so.
So let's maybe Samantha, you and I can talk offline about, about when, what time, you know, what point in the year we could do it. And I also want to point out that I put something in the chat that about, about the Terms of Office. It's not from the bylaws, it's from Illinois law.
Until the successors are. Okay.
So you hold, you hold office until, there's nothing about a limitation of two terms, but, and there's nothing in our bylaws about a limitation of two terms. It's simply been tradition.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, is there anything else, guys?
I do have a question.
Yeah.
Are, do you want me to join one of the committees?
I will talk to you about that later.
Okay.
You have no choice.
I know, well, that's what I figured. So I'm really asking, which committee do you want me on?
I don't know yet.
Okay, that's fine.
Because I might, it might require someone else moving. I don't know. And it might depend on, I mean, if anybody has a specific preference on, you know, either they want to stay or go or, you know, I know Greg, you're not leaving the Finance Committee and Amy's.
You have no choice.
I mean, so, so anyway, but yeah, we can, we can talk about that offline.
Okay.
All right, so I will take a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, Sophia?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Carl?
Yes.
Samantha?
Yes.
We adjourned at 5:34. Welcome to your.